Ladies and gentlemen, would you please rise and join with me in our pledge to our country? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Remain standing for a prayer, please.
Our heavenly Father, we, it's a privilege to come to you tonight as we, the world celebrates the birth of Jesus Christ, and we just want to thank you for that. Thank you for Emmanuel coming, Christ with us, Jesus with us, God with us, to come to save us from our sins, and we just want to ask that you would be on the hearts and minds of this world as we celebrate the birth of Christ. We just want to thank you. Father, we want to ask that you be with our meeting tonight, be with each one of these people that's in front of me as they ponder each decision, and we ask that you grant them the wisdom that only comes from above in the decisions that they make. Just bless them. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Called to order, our City Public Works Authority Meeting of December 19th. Second item on the agenda is public comment, community announcements, and recognitions, and we have some significant recognitions with our firefighter department.
It's great to recognize growth and professional development of our staff, and at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Fire Chief Eric Harlow, and he's going to run us through the penning on two promotions in the fire department. Eric?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, and fellow staff members and guests, I appreciate the opportunity to celebrate a career achievement for these two men. Their department has proudly served this city for almost 129 years, coming up this April, and we're very proud of the opportunity to protect the citizens and property of this city. Tonight firefighter Dane Lawson will be promoted to the rank of lieutenant, and Lieutenant Michael Nivens will be promoted to the rank of captain. If you and your families will, that are going to do the penning, if you'll please come up here and stand to my left, please. Dane Lawson has been with the Guthrie Fire Department since December 21st of 2009. Dane's a Guthrie native, graduated from Guthrie High School, and has been with us almost eight years here in two days. Dane's excelled in his position as a firefighter. He's served as an EMS instructor and recently took the effort to obtain his advanced EMT license. Penning his lieutenant's badge tonight will be his parents Ted and Vicky Lawson and his wife Sarah Lawson. Michael Nivens joined the fire department in 2003. Mike's a native of Coyle, Oklahoma, and he served both Coyle Fire Department and the Spencer Fire Department before joining us here at Guthrie. In his nearly 15 years with our department, Mike's been an EMS instructor, and he's also served as an intermediate EMT, and he's extremely knowledgeable when it comes to doing maintenance on some of our equipment. I know this is an extremely proud moment for Mike and his family as his grandfather, retired assistant chief of the Guthrie Fire Department, Delbert Maker, and his wife Shannon will be pinning his badge and brass on him tonight. If you guys will come over here, I'll present you the badges. I'd also like to present you guys with your new helmets that signify your new earned ranks. All right, congratulations to both of you. I know you'll do very well in your new positions, and I'm extremely proud of the work that both of you guys and everybody that works with us does for this city. Either one of you guys want to say any words you feel free to?
I'd just like to, I knew tonight I wouldn't be standing up here if it wasn't for my wife. I owe her a big thank you. For those of you that don't know in this room, our shifts are 24 hours and it's about 10 days a month. The other 20 to 21 I spent in our master bedroom closet, is the only quiet spot in the house, and studied 12 to 14 hours a day, and I just want to thank her for putting up with me the last 11 months this year, so thank you, babe.
Thank you all for allowing us to share this little special moment of our department and our families with you guys. I appreciate it. These guys do spend a lot of time away from home, they miss a lot of holidays, a lot of birthdays, and a lot of other special moments in their families' lives, so when you're enjoying Christmas, you know, you might think a little bit extra for our police and our fire department and emergency folks as they're out doing their work, even though everybody gets to sit at home and enjoy the holiday, they still have to function and work 24/7, so we appreciate it. Thank you all.
Before everybody leaves, we've got one more item to do. Eric, did you bring your? The fire department EMS makes us proud every day, and they continue to grow professionally and serve our community. Fire Chief Eric Harlow, we just want to recognize him tonight. He recently graduated from the Oklahoma Executive Fire Officer Leadership Graduate Class, and we want to recognize him for that education process.
Congratulations to all three of you. Item three on our agenda is Consent Agenda Item A, which is approval of the Guthrie Public Works Authority Meeting of December 5th. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Submit your votes. Let's see the votes. Unanimous approval of the Consent Agenda Item A, Public Works Authority Meeting of December 5th. With that, ladies and gentlemen, our Public Works Authority Meeting is adjourned, and I call to order our city council meeting of December 19th. We have Consent Agenda Item A, which is the approval of the minutes of our City of Guthrie Council Meeting of December 5th. I'll entertain a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Submit your votes. Let's see the votes. Unanimous approval of the Consent Agenda Item A, which is the approval of the minutes of our city council meeting of December 5th. Item number three, continuation of our workshop discussion concerning the downtown street scape project and also the multipurpose Trail Master Plan. Staff?
I know we went through the Trail Master Plan rather hurriedly at the end of the workshop. If I did an adequate job of explaining it, we do have an action item for you to give us the green light to go through the process to apply for one of the trail grants that will be closing at the end of January. I don't know if we need any further discussion from the workshop, but be glad to cover anything else or address any questions.
I'd like to make a motion to approve to go for the first grant.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes, please. See the votes. Unanimous approval to move forward in the submission of the grant. Item number four, discussion, possible action to select conceptual design of the downtown street scape project and the transportation alternatives.
That one we discussed in tabling it until a meeting in February.
Okay, so that is a non-action item.
Do we need to table that, or is that sufficient, Randall?
I'd like to vote, we should vote table it so we've got a record of what we did.
Motion to table it?
Second.
Any discussion? Submit your votes. See the votes. Unanimous approval to table the item on the downtown street escapes for further discussion. Item, and item number five, discussion, possible action on the submission of recreational trails program. I guess that's what we already voted on.
You already did that one.
Already voted on that one, folks, so move forward to item number six, public hearing and discussion, possible action on the request for Guthrie Holding LLC Bart James to rezone property described herein on, from R1 to R2. Do we have comments from the public?
Is the, Mayor, excuse me, but should we hear from the staff first on?
Okay.
Mayor, Chris.
On the application.
Staff? Rebecca's.
Our city planner came down with the flu Monday, so I'm not quite as probably attractive to look at, but I'm gonna do the report.
We don't have to vote on that.
Wouldn't be much of a contest, would it? This item went to the planning commission. Let me find my folder. And I have draft minutes of the planning commission if you would like for me to hand out, but I can highlight them. The regular meeting of the planning commission was held on December 14th, last Thursday. There were three members present, which give them a quorum, Vern Ogden, Joe Chapel, and Bob Kenworthy. On this item, the application was heard and approved back in August to vacate the alleyway on this same property to work towards the expansion of the existing Providence House. The R2 General Residential District, which is the district they're asked to rezone the property to, permits by right housing for elderly and is the appropriate zoning district for the existing and expanding use that's proposed. There were no public comments made. A motion was made by Commissioner Chapel and seconded by Commissioner Kenworthy, and all three voted yes. If you, after the public hearing and comments from the public, it would be staff's recommendation to adopt ordinance number 3312, and that will be the ordinance that will rezone this property from R1 Single Family Dwelling District to R2 General Residential District.
What's the capacity on the R2 out of, maybe I missed that part?
I don't have my zoning book on all, you want me to list all the uses you could do in R2?
No, I'm talking about within the multiple. Can you have 20 people per 100 people?
That one that you all did involving the downtown, that ordinance only covers the downtown district. It does not limit anything outside of the downtown district.
So I make a motion to approve.
Second.
We need to have public comment first, or opportunity for public comment. Would you like to make a few short comments?
Bart James from Tulsa, Oklahoma, the applicant, unless you have some questions.
Address, Mr. James?
Oh, 7910 South 101st East Avenue, Tulsa, Oklahoma.
Thank you, you have five minutes.
Okay, I'm good unless you've got some questions to answer. The sole purpose is just racially to rezone it, to bring the current facility into your zoning compliance and rezone the rest of it to add. Basically, I think that right now they're planning on two buildings of 16 units each, four pods of four units, and to expand that facility out there, and we look forward to getting on that process.
Okay, does anybody have any questions of Mr. James? Now I'll entertain a motion and a second.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any other discussion? Submit your votes. Let's see the votes. Unanimous approval to approve that zoning request, that change. Item number seven, public hearing, discussion, possible action concerning request from Melvin, Joe, and Laura Ann Evans to rezone property from R1 to A2. Staff comments?
Before I make comments on this one, could we skip down to item nine? Because I need to know whether we're going to meet on January 2nd or January 16th in my recommendations on this one.
I make a motion that we skip that meeting.
I second that.
Any other discussion? Submit your votes. See the votes. I guess we have one abstention. Oh, he's already left. Unanimous approval from all those present to not have our meeting of January 2nd, Tuesday, January 2nd, so that is eliminated from our schedule. Back to item number seven, staff comments?
As part of the process on this rezoning, this property was annexed, my understanding, in the late 1970s, and there has been a question raised at the time that it was annexed, was it brought in as A1 or agriculture? Then was it ever rezoned? Was there an ordinance rezoning it to its current residential zoning? We need some additional time to research to find out and go through our ordinances to see, it may already be zoned agriculture and never changed, which would make this mute. So our recommendation would be to continue this item to our next regular meeting on January 16th so we can do that research on the annexation, what it was zoned at that time, and if it was ever rezoned from A1.
Motion to continue.
Second.
To January 16th.
January 16th.
Mr. Evans, is there any urgency that would counteract that?
No, sir, we've been at this for six months so far, and a couple of weeks won't matter at all.
Okay.
And I travel for work, but I am home on the 16th, so that's why I have mine.
So we have a motion and a second to delay any discussion on this item until the 16th. Submit your votes. See the votes. Unanimous from all those councilmen present to move this action item, public hearing and action item, to the 16th of January. Item number eight, discussion, possible action to deny tort claim number 204047-BD. Staff?
You want me to do this, Leo?
Sure.
O-MAG will not represent us on this claim, it's not covered by our policy. This was a claim for damage to ceilings, a claim that our officers did in executing a warrant, pulling a defendant who had a warrant for his arrest out of the ceiling where he was hiding. I recommend we deny the claim. There are multiple reasons to do it, but I guess the easiest one is they didn't submit any competent estimate of how they arrived at $1,000, so, you know, it could have been $5,000, it could have been $10,000, it could have been $100, we don't know, so my recommendation is we deny the claim.
Okay.
There are other legal reasons to deny.
All right, I'll entertain a motion and a second.
So moved.
Motion and a second to deny the claim. Any other discussion? Submit your votes. See the votes. Unanimous approval to deny the tort claim number 204047-BD. Item number 10, city manager report.
I do have a city manager's report, try to do once a month, and if Aaron will start showing the slides, this is just a sampling of some of our activities. The first slide is public works placement of riprap along Guthrie Lake spillway. The next picture shows cleaning and crack sealing on the Guthrie Lake spillway. The third one is constructed and placed a metal grate over the well in the gazebo in Mineral Wells Park. And then the drinking water treatment plant passed an inspection from the Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality, or DEQ, so our water treatment plant met all the standards of DEQ. Fire department, the grant-funded cardiac monitors that you all approved have been placed into service in all the ambulances and rescue vehicles. All crews have been trained, the funding has been received and payment has been remitted. The Central Electric Co-op Community Grant Foundation-funded ventilator devices have been placed into service as well. In November, the fire and EMS service responded to 261 incidents. Police Department participated in a junior high health fair. The keynote speaker was OSU FCA Chaplain John Tally, who with the help of several OSU athletes used humor and game show antics to teach that committing crimes devalues a person. Over a two-day period, Sergeant Gibbs taught 10 breakout sessions about drug awareness, keen on the fact that self-worth plays a very large role in keeping us from using drugs. The next slide, Sergeant Gales received a shining combination via Facebook about his actions with a child during a traffic stop. His interaction with that child was well-received by his parents and made quite an impression on the child. Officer Williams and Sergeant Gibbs got to present two anti-drug assemblies at Fogarty Elementary. The students were reminded of their immense worth and that they were too valuable to use drugs. Additionally, they were given the Fogarty Hero Challenge coloring pledge sheets. The children were challenged to get 10 adults they know to commit to being drug-free by signing the pledge and signing the back of the sheet. If the child completes the page, they will get to walk in the 89er parade as a GBT Fogarty Hero. After the assembly, Sergeant Gibbs made another presentation concerning the ramifications of stealing. Sergeant Lenoy and Sergeant Thorne attended crisis intervention training for a week in Tulsa. Officers learned to recognize mental illness and to effectively manage crisis interactions with mentally ill people. The Guthrie Police Department held their annual Christmas with a cop at Walmart on Sunday, this last Sunday night. The program helps children have a merrier Christmas. After gathering funds from the wonderful people, business, and groups of our community all year, our offices were able to take a lot of young people Christmas shopping. This event is such a worthy cause benefiting local children who are in desperate need of a very special Christmas time. The awe and smiles and laughs coming from the kids are amazing, but don't even compare to the joy that it brings to our officers that participate in the program. The public library, since January 2017, the library has served over 15,000 customers. The library has a strong social media presence. The library receives over 1,400 Facebook likes and comments per week. This year, they had the first annual chili cook-off. The library hosted their first annual chili cook-off. Participants offered judges various chili recipes. There was a first, second, and third place winner. They were honored as well as the spiciest and the tastiest chili. The first annual tween gingerbread house contest was conducted to support young minds with the STEM or science, technology, engineering, and math-based programming. The library hosted this contest, so the participants gave their best cookie engineering skills to create sustainable gingerbread houses. We had our city employee Christmas appreciations and awards luncheon. I have several pictures showing the various staff that participated in some of the games and activities at the Christmas employee appreciation luncheon. There were several awards given out, but we started out with our building code inspector, Jim Hankey's retirement. Jim Hankey retired after 18 years of service in the planning department as a building code official. When Jim started his career with no building certifications, he achieved unrestricted residential and commercial certifications early in his career, and that's four licenses for each side of that. As a building inspector, Jim, with his people skills, have been able to have contractors make corrections without complaints coming to City Hall, so he has used his people skills in working with our contractors. We appreciate his work for the city of Guthrie and will miss him in his full-time role. He will continue to work part-time mentoring our new building inspector that starts at the end of this month. Awards handed out, we have an efficiency innovation award. The individual to be nominated for this award is someone who has not only effectively and efficiently used employee time and city resources, but also found an innovative way to improve efficiency. The winner of that award was Fleet Maintenance Superintendent Benny Barker. Benny has worked for the city of Guthrie for 31 years. He has worked on everything from swimming pool vacuums to as large as a ladder truck or dozer. He keeps every department's vehicles and machines running so they can serve the community at their highest level of customer service. Next award was the community service award. The individual who's nominated for this award is one who treats customers with the highest level of integrity and goes above and beyond in providing customer service. This individual strives to find solutions to issues when no one else will and does more than what their job description requires when needed. The winner of this award was Police Officer Jose Botella. Officer Botella always takes the extra moment to make sure he's doing everything he can to help our citizens and fulfill his duty as an officer. Next one, the integrity character award. The individual who's nominated for this award demonstrates daily commitment to honesty and integrity. The person truly sympathized the description of integrity set out in our ethics document, which is to conduct ourselves in honest, fair, and trustworthy manner. The winner of the integrity character award, and I might say it's hard on the character part, is our Parks and Cemetery Maintenance Supervisor Kerry Don, or as we know him, KD Lewis. KD Lewis is a team player and the best right-hand staff person anyone could ask for. Whatever's needed of him, he does it with a smile, even on the worst of days, his infectious smile and the big KD fist bump can lift the lowest of spirits, and anyone who has the pleasure to meet or work with him is blessed because of it. Our Parks and Cemetery Department is one that our community is proud of, and he is a prime example of a true public servant that puts the citizens of Guthrie first. Then there are two city manager competency and charact- Then there are two city manager competency and character awards this year. The individual who receives this award is selected by the city manager. This award is for the employee that stands out among all others for their service to the city, the citizens and employees. We give out two of them this year. The first one went to Lieutenant Steve Mize. Lieutenant Mize is a jack-of-all-trades, and he fills in a lot of important roles to the police department that aren't part of anybody's defined job description. And with the absence of our police chief this year, Steve has continued to fulfill his role as the lieutenant and serve as our acting chief for an extended period of time this year. The second award went to City Clerk, City Treasurer, Kim Briggs. And you're all familiar that during the timeframe that you were without a city manager, she served as the interim city manager and did a great job, as well as continued to perform her job as city clerk, city treasurer. And then once I took office in February, a short 10 months ago, she helped me in the transition period. I always tell the story, the first day I was here, over 10 minutes, she come up to my office to tell me about a problem the city had that I may have not been aware of as it, through the interview process. And she told me that she would be back in the afternoon to tell me all the good news. She just didn't come back after that. Kim is a big asset to the city, and she is appreciated, and she is an important part of our management team. To highlight some of the things that have been occurring in the community that staff participates in a support way, if not funding through setting up roadblocks with police and various support that we provide from the city. On November 25th, we had the Lighted Parade on Oklahoma Avenue. On November 25th was also the inauguration of the territorial governor, and I believe that will be the next slide. Lighting of the territorial Christmas tree. And then on December 9th, there was the historic home tours, and I've got about four slides showing the historic home tour. And then on the evenings of December 9th and 16th, the Victorian Walk, evenings in downtown Guthrie. And also during this timeframe, the Territorial Christmas Carol 2017's going on at the Pollard Theater. The Yuletide Organ Concert, it was on December 16th, and a Christmas Carol, a Reader's Theater production is going on tomorrow night, December 20th. It was thrilling for me as, as city manager, because I was not here last Christmas, but we went to a restaurant to eat Friday night before we went to the Pollard for the play. And I was amazed, people at various tables from other towns, several couples from Norman were up that night to go to the play. And then my wife and I went out to eat on Saturday night before we come to the territorial Christmas walk. And we sat next to a table of 12 people that had come up from Oklahoma City, and they were going to eat and go to territorial walk and then go to the play after they did that. And it's just, it's amazing to see the number of people that we have in our community from these special events, and not only local residents, but a good number of people, not only from out of town in other communities of Oklahoma, but from other states, and even have some foreign visitors to our community as a result of some of these events. So I think it's been a good Christmas season, and that's my report.
Very good. It has been a good Christmas season, and lots going on in our community. Item number 11 is comments from members of the city council. Councilman Wood?
Thank you, yes, it's been a lot of fun this, so far this Christmas season. The city of Guthrie Christmas party honoring everybody that, that well-deserved, and congratulations to everybody at the Christmas party for the awards that they made and all the fun that we had, and thank you for putting it on, Kim, and everybody else that did that. And it was a great dinner, too, who all brought the food. The territorial walks were great, I think that they were really busy. As city manager said, it went off just well, it was, the town was full. And talking with different people from the Pollard, everybody said it's just been a lot of fun. And the reading of the Christmas carol tomorrow night at the temple should be really fun. I hope everybody comes out to see that, that is going to be a really neat deal. Hope everybody has a very merry Christmas and a safe holiday season. Thanks.
Councilman Taylor?
I'd second that, too, I think it was outstanding meeting. I had sat with Tanny and his wife, it was a blast, and Leaderway was over there bugging me, so. But I, I appreciate the invite, guys, and it was fun, and I look forward to seeing it, doing it again. And I brought my wife, too, so. And one quick thing, no football, basketball, anything like that. I'm gonna say congrats to my daughter. She got her grades today, and she was very happy, so, and this is a real happy dad. One of the classes she'd been just working hard in, she ended up with a C in it, and I was really tickled to death in it, so I was, yay.
Makes you happy, too.
Yes, makes me happy.
Councilwoman?
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Councilwoman Paget?
Thank you. I do want to say to everybody that is listening, do be respectful to the police officers that we have in the fire department, because they don't get to spend as much time with their families as they would like to spend. They are on shift holidays, it doesn't make any difference graduations. It's very special time when they get to spend a holiday with their family, and I, I personally would appreciate it if everybody appreciated them and the work that they do. Let's not forget that we are honoring Jesus Christ on this holiday of Christmas. Be with your families, enjoy everybody, and Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Okay. Councilman Case?
Yeah, I'd, I'd second everything you guys have said. City staff, I really want to say thank you to the things you do. Tanny, the, we were talking about the Victorian Walk and the Organ Concert, and all the things that have been going on in Guthrie, but there's trashcans all over town, and, and all that stuff gets scattered, and, and these guys are behind the scenes, nobody ever really notices them, but they're the ones that make that all happen, and I just want to say thank you for that. The guys at the Scottish Rite that put on that Organ Concert, and we'll be putting on the, the reading tomorrow night, nobody ever sees them either. But thanks, guys, and Merry Christmas.
Councilman Bothred?
Yeah, I just want to say Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to everybody.
Councilman Smedley?
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, thank you, staff, thank you, council.
Well, congratulations to the three men that we, we honored earlier today. Clearly, some of the, some, some of, some of our finest, and, and we have an awful lot of very, very fine staff that are serving the city of Guthrie. If you didn't have a chance to get to the Scottish Rite Temple, they, they added something really, really cool this year. Silent movie in which the organ played background music to it, as, as you would probably see back in the 1920s. I don't know, Randall, you might know. But anyway, I don't. But, but they really, really did a fine job. And, and the reading of the, of the Christmas story is going to be another real positive and a new thing, and so hats off to the, to, to all of the individuals involved with the, with the Scottish Rite Temple, because they're doing a lot of great things. Victorian Walk, huge success. Thank you for those individuals that opened up their homes on the home tour. Lots of people working behind the scenes, obviously city employees, but also lots of volunteers to make it happen for our city of Guthrie. It is a special time, this Christmas season, and my hope is that we just carry on the joy and peace and kindness and forgiving of our Christmas season all year long. That's my hope, that's my wish. Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah. We move to item number 13, or 12. Approval to convene into executive session for purpose of discussion, discussing negotiations with the paternal order of the police.
So moved. Second.
Motion in second, any discussion? Submit your votes.
I'll vote Karen.
See the votes. Unanimous approval to move to executive.